Alright, so I'm gonna call the the July twenty fifth meeting of the ad hoc budget procedure committee to order at six forty three. Members Mike Whitney and Ian Thomas present, Jen White is not currently here, but may join us in a few minutes. First item on the agenda is the review of the minutes. Have you had a chance to look at them, Mike?
I did, yeah. They look good to me.
Oh, yeah, they look good to me as well, now that I can see them. So, uh, yeah, let's, um, next up, and so in talking with Joyce, she brought it to my attention that with committees, we don't necessarily have to vote to slide around on the agenda. So that's our leisure. If we want to do that, we can. If we wanna kinda just go by consensus to move to another part of the agenda, we can as well.
That's great, actually. Now it kind of makes more fluid.
Yeah, definitely. So I'm fine with taking that approach. So with that being said, do you have any preference as to where you wanna jump into tonight?
Uh, no, I'll go with your lead.
Alright. Um, let's see here. Let's take a look at the timeline. Let's see. Time number three. No. Hold on one second. Okay. I'm gonna share the screen and bring up the document. Alright. Can you see the document?
Yeah, I can. It's kind of reduced because I can see the whole. It's not, it's showing the whole desktop, but.
Gotcha, gotcha. Alright, I mean, um. Alright, is that any better?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, we kind of left off on this last time. And, um.
And, and part of these, you know, we've got that prior FY closeout. That's, that's relevant to the next budget, but, but that's sort of should be happening anyway, right? Like, that's you know, that, that's part of the financial. I guess that's as part of the finance director report, right?
Right. It is, it is. I guess I, I, I put that in there just because I wanted us to be aware of it.
Yeah.
And how it kind of overlaps and interlocks with the, the new budget. I guess, I don't know. Do you, do you think we should take it out, or do you want to just leave it in there?
No, I like having it in there, but it's just, I'm just noting that we, we kind of, we're getting that already, right? Like, just this year, for instance, in July, we, we had the finance director talk about the, the closeout and what still has to come and things like that. It's nice to have it in because it's relevant, but I, it, it is existing, right?
Yeah.
And, and it probably didn't happen as regularly last year because of all the transitions and I don't, I can't speak to what happened before.
Yeah, same here. And I, I just, um, you know, through the experience that we had this past time around, it just, um, for me, I, I just like to have it there to, to be mindful of that that's gonna be happening at the same time that we're asking, you know, these other things to be happening.
Right.
So while they don't interlock, or they shouldn't interlock, they do sort of overlap.
And did we lose something from September, October?
Let's see.
Because I've got, um, I wonder if that's the earlier version that you're, you're looking at.
Let me.
Because September had the superintendent sends budget forms to DHs and, and P's for the department heads and principals.
Right. What's the second version? Yeah, you're right. This is a different version. Where does the other one go? Yeah, alright, um. Not sure how that happened. So that was in September. Do you, do you have the current version in front of you right now? Oh, you're muted, Mike.
It, yeah, so it says superintendent sends budget forms to DHs and P's. And this is another thing that, that's almost certainly happening. Like, we, we can't, we're not dictating this to the superintendent that, that there are, a super, any superintendent is doing this roughly at this point, anyway. We're just putting it in a timeline so that we know.
Right, he is aware of it and, you know.
Yeah, in the same sense, the prior year closeout, that's something a finance director is going to, uh, you think keep us advised of, apprised of every month.
Right. And then superintendent prioritizes budget forms?
Yeah, prioritize, uh, DH's and P's requests and starts drafting superintendent budget. And that, and then on November is those two ones, and then superintendent delivers draft budget to BOE by Thanksgiving slash end of November for review.
Okay.
And then we have that up at top, I guess. Because it's sort of like this, what the superintendent's doing. Because actually, those other two are really kind of finance director slash superintendent.
Yeah. Superintendent delivers?
Uh, delivers draft budget to BOE by Thanksgiving slash end of November for review. And then let's look at December. Um, we added, uh, on top, first item on December was BOE reviews budget individually. You know what? Oh, I wonder, reviews budget individually, I wonder what that meant, but anyway, it's not what individually means, but.
Um, I think that meant like we didn't necessarily meet on it, but we, well.
Well, isn't sure.
Yeah. We could just make a note saying either individually or as a group, like, when do we, ideally, like, when would we think, um, is a good time to start doing the Board of Ed review? Like, I mean, as, you know, ideally, we would all receive the package and have some time with it ourselves.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good point, so. BOE members dive into the budget.
Never be heard from again.
Yeah. And then I think January looks the same. Actually, we could just solve that by BOE members receive and review superintendent budget, because that takes it away from as a group.
Right, I collect this, huh?
And, and this is sort of a time, well, we'll talk about, I'll wait on that.
Alright.
I think that January looked good, so February looks the same. March had only one item, same thing. I don't think we touched April, May, June.
Yeah.
So, alright. So, so I had a thought, sort of like in the, um, maybe the sort of September, October timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was thinking about it, like, uh, I, I could see what happened last year where, I, I think there was sort of a superintendent's budget that got presented early that, but it was sort of a sketch. It seemed to me like that eleven point whatever percent it was.
Um, yeah, yeah. The one that kind of came out at that February meeting?
Yeah, and it's sort of sketched out there and, but it wasn't a full, like, here's a sheet you're looking through, like, we've been looking through, for instance, with, uh,
That was a real big number. I think it was like thirteen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, my, yeah. And, and so like, I mean, obviously, we want that, something like that to be fully fleshed out, and that's what you're that, 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 like, best guess in November from the superintendent. At the end of November is what we're talking about getting, but fleshed out.
Right, yeah. So that, that, that's where it changed, that, that would be a change, as far as like what's been done historically.
Yeah, yeah, getting that early. But I was thinking something that could happen even earlier than end of November, and actually is like might be real straightforward to do, uh, and with little guesswork is, you know, this year, we've got the FY twenty five budget, and we'll be considering the FY twenty six next year.
Mm-hmm.
So just take the FY twenty five budget and advance it into twenty six, making the known changes and, and they could, the finance director or superintendent could just bullet point off what the changes were, because we always talk, well, these are locked in because they're contractual. And, you know, salaries would go up, benefits would go up, um, some new plan, like, you know, transportation might go down or up, who knows, based on, on things like that, but.
Yeah, you're thinking that could happen in October-ish?
Yeah, it's just like, kind of, I don't know what to call it exactly. Nutrally, it'd be sort of the, the starting point budget.
Um, yeah, I like what you said about advancing the twenty previous year's budget with, with, with known changes.
Yeah, into, yeah, sort of into like, and, and that's what it is with no, like, um, uh, yeah, with locked in changes or something like that. I like known changes, that's good. The known knowns.
Yeah. Known changes, that could include contractual and various other, like, yeah, step, yeah.
And they can bullet point what they are, right?
Right.
Because actually, the other thing I was just reflecting on this, the budget process, we always wanna know, and this is where the narrative points go in, um, later on throughout, is okay, what's increased, what's decreased, and why? Uh, and, and so if it's, if it's increased because it's contractual, not, like, how much discussion can you have on that? Nothing.
Exactly, like, yeah, we, we run around that, uh, that circle sometimes, a few, a few laps too many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At all levels of, of the budget process.
Right, contractual, contractual, that's it. Like, we really can't change that, you know, so.
Until the next contract. Right? And, and, um, and then, then the other thing, because the, the starting point budget is not, I mean, they'll still have it, right? Because you always have that column for whatever the, the, this year's budget is compared to next year's.
Yep.
But it, it'd be nice, because then, when the superintendent's budget comes out, like, we've already at least acclimated to some of the increases that are gonna be there. Superintendent will still have those things, and then it'll say things like, you know, we're reducing, uh, full-time equivalent here because we're shifting it into reading, uh, we expect some retirements here, and, uh, and we're, we found some efficiencies in the schedule, things like that, right? It's just, it's easier to track, I think, if we already, like, basically, at that point, we'd already be sort of in a, a next year mindset in terms of the dollars. Um, and then you really would be talking about what's added, what's subtracted programmatically. Because that's, I mean, that's where the real the board input is, right? Like, okay, you're like, here, this year, a lot of information was, was requested for many reasons, but one of them was, it was an upheaval budget. Right, like, our best is gone, and, uh, and then there were huge budget pressures up.
Right.
And to make broad-based decisions like that, um, you need the details sometimes. But in other years, it might be, well, you know, we're, we're still, we've got about the same number of students, we're still gonna have the same number of teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so, so like, we could kind of focus our efforts more in, in, like, programmatically, you know, areas are gonna change things programmatically.
Yeah.
But, but I, I like it, I like, like, you know, we're not front-end loading it, it's just, it's, I like this, what you've laid out, because it's like a, a natural transition from um, less about the current year, more about the, the next year, and, um, and throughout, so. It's good.
Alright, thank you. Um, see.
Oh, when do, so when December comes,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's probably when individual members are starting to formulate what information they need.
Right.
Like, that's a big time right there.
Individual members develop questions and inquiries, or, or, never mind, it's been a long day. Uh, individual members. Then submit to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, well, last year, we ended up with this, like, you know, big spreadsheet of, you know, frequently asked questions, and you know, it was sort of like, kind of, you know, it, it felt like it was, it was a thing that was kind of put together on the fly, but I think at the end of the day, it kind of turned out to be a decent format, because in a lot of ways, we could all review it and see what questions have already been asked. And so if, you know, so would we want to submit them to like maybe a, a shared spreadsheet?
I, I think that's the way to do it, and, um, uh, because, because that live doc, it's, it's like this, but, but that, that works out pretty well, because they ended up answering with links, as it seems to me, because they already had on their side, the information is just, you know, making it accessible to us.
Um, right.
The, the one thing is, you know, it, it could seem like uh, an endless task, right? Because as we answer five, we've got nine people could easily generate many, many questions, so I'm wondering if there's any gatekeeping that needs to happen in terms of like, kind of getting on the list. We had the same question about referrals from, from Dean, really.
Uh, yeah.
And, it's, uh,
Well, you know, I, I think the staff did kind of handle that to some extent last year. If you, if you look at that, have you gone to look at the FAQ yet?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there was a, a number of times where they said not a budget question, um, or they, you know, did a quick answer, um, somehow if it was an easily handled thing. Um, but, uh,
Yeah, and I don't know if Jay wants to take it on, but, like, you know, actually, it could be a, the, the, do we call it the vice chair position? I can't remember the associate.
Yeah, vice chair does include secretary, like, the way that position's defined at this point.
And, and so he, he could kind of delegate, like, basically, though, they could kind of be a little bit of gatekeeper, and then, and then if, if, if they say no, just, you know, someone, individual member could bring up to the board and say, hey, I really need this question answered, and why?
I, I've got a great idea. Maybe we say, you know, by the secretary of the board, because that is a position, and right now, it's been blended into the vice president or the vice chair position.
May, maybe, but the, but the Jay as the chair might wanna just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or how about this? We'll do chair, vice chair.
Yeah, with, with appeal to general membership, I guess.
Negative leadership.
Yeah, actually, that's true, because, um, board officers is what it is, yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
With, with, with appeal to general membership.
With what?
With, with an appeal to general membership, because, uh, you, you know, it doesn't have to be formal, but like, if you really wanted to know how many toasters were in the, uh, you know, all the schools, and have a budget, really, the reason why, then, then, well, I, I'd back you on that, probably, right? Like, you know, so, something like that might come up.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got it. So like, if a officer said, no, 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 never mind, someone could appeal that ruling.
Yeah, because it, sometimes the reasons are indirect, right? Like, you know, you're asking about one thing because you're thinking about, uh, you, you know, this other part has pressure on it, and so you're looking for savings somewhere else, and you know. I mean, we can always ask in a meeting anyway.
Right, exactly, exactly. That's always fair game. Um, so when do you think opening like the, uh, the committee of the whole?
Yeah, when is, when's our real date? Is like the, this is when the budget has to go out at March?
I believe it's February twenty eighth is the day that we absolutely have to deliver the package to the manager.
Yeah, so it's gotta open up right away in January. I think it opened up, I don't know if it opened up late or not, but I know you guys met a lot.
Well, yeah, you know, and, and, you know, just to my understanding, now speaking for anyone else, but like, you know, there were a lot of meetings this time around, one because it was an upheaval budget, and also there was a big overhaul in the board membership altogether.
And finance director.
Right, and the finance director, uh, and the R presser like coming out of it. Um, so there was a number of factors coming in. Plus, with like the financial crises of the health insurance situation, there is a lot of vectors coming to, 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 to bear on one point. So, you know, my own feeling was that it was never clear to me when we actually were going to start. I was more accustomed to the town council slash RTM approach to the budget, and it was definitely disorienting for me to be in these meetings when there was, you know, like, no clear opportunity to like make a motion to like reduce a number or to increase a number, or, you know, what opportunity the board had to kind of maybe lean in that way, you know, similar, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I was, I was agreeing, because I've been kind of back, I've been back watching them. Uh, and, and that's quite a, a difference for me, and, and I, so we want room, I guess in terms of the timeline document, we want plenty of room to have, be able to do that, and then this kind of speaks to the, sort of like, what our policies want to be too, right?
Right, and, and, and so what happened was, we had this massive compression, because that, that theoretical budget, the thirteen, whatever, thirteen and change, um, came out on February twelfth. And from there, that's when everyone realized, like, there's a lot of work to be done here.
Yeah.
So, there, that, that's, in my understanding of the situation, um, was what led to like those rapid-fire meetings, like two to three a week. Um, obviously, that's not ideal. Um, so I, I would like, I would like to see the committee of the whole that is the budget review session start in January, like, right after the new year.
Yeah, yeah, or, or maybe like, you know, time-wise, it's probably be of like, may, maybe at least mid, early to mid-January, right? Like,
Yeah.
But you can just say January.
Um, great, I already had, are you seeing that? I already have that note there. Right? There it is.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. That is good, and, and because it's good to have that started before, like, you have the joint, so the joint BOE TC, I think that's, and, um, uh, RTM, we should have that in there too, on that one.
Yeah, because, let's see, typically, that happens in February.
Yeah, we've got it, we've got it above in January.
Right, okay, so I put that there because in my memory, it seemed like this meeting, you know, always occurred before the Board of Ed got into their deliberations on the budget. So that there could be some guidance for the Board of Ed. Um, as to like what the town council and the public are thinking in the RTM.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I mean, honestly, I, that always feels kind of weird too, to me, now that having been on the other side of it, being on the Board of Ed side of things. I felt like I was sitting up there during that joint meeting, and all I could add is more critique, or, or, because I didn't have any real investment in that budget. It wasn't my budget. I wasn't involved with it. That's what the superintendent presented to us. You know, we hadn't touched it yet at that point.
Yeah, and the chair's in the same position that way.
Right. So in some ways, I think it would make more sense to maybe if, if, if February, the mid-February date is sort of a A, um. What's been done historically already with the town, maybe we keep that date. But that gives us like, you know, four to five weeks of the Board of Ed working on it. And that's maybe. That mid February is when the Board of Ed presents its draft budget. Having already done some work.
Or, or, or just, I mean, it's still, maybe the superintendent still owns it at that point, right? But at least it's, you know, in progress. Um.
Right.
So, um, was there not a, a. Board of Education, uh, hearing on the budget this year? I felt like it, it got, uh, it was supposed to be and then there wasn't notice or something.
It was really unclear, really murky. Um, honestly, like. If I went back and reviewed the meetings and, um, checked my notes, I. There was supposed to be one and then somehow it didn't happen. Um, there was supposed to be. A joint session between the town council and Board of Ed, that's my understanding on that February twelfth meeting. It was supposed to be like part one. Was, um. Receiving the public comment as a joint body.
Yeah.
But then there was supposed to be a joint deliberation. Between the two bodies, town council and Board of Ed, after we received the public comment.
But put in the R T M in there too, forget. I'm, you know, biased in favor of the R T M, of course.
Yeah.
Uh. Yeah.
Yeah. So. Well, yeah, there was supposed to be a public hearing. I think it was supposed to happen sometime. In early February. But some, something did, something, I'd, I'd have to go back and remind myself, but something weird did happen.
So should we have that in in the February, just a B O E public hearing?
Like straight B O E, no.
Yeah, why not? I mean, they, they can come, but it's just, i- if it's, if it's a public hearing, you're really just literally. Hearing what other people have to say, right?
Yeah.
It's kind of like an extended, uh, or a, a purpose oriented, uh, uh, public comment. So.
Right, so.
Um. That, and that one can have it too, right? Like, so I like that January one that you've got there.
Yeah.
Cause, cuz we want.
Yeah.
But, but also.
If we're gonna have the superintendent budget, um. Then I think that should be presented on it, on its own. And then when we, after we have a pass at it, we should be able to present that to the public. As far as like an initial draft.
Yeah, that's a good point, right? So, so that's a joint B O E T C R T M meeting on superintendent budget, I guess.
Yeah.
Specifically.
Cause that gives us the ability to hear the public, hear the town council and the R T M concern. And then we take that in and run the superintendent's budget through those filters.
Yeah.
Using our. Institutional knowledge such as it is, um, to try to make the adjustments that people have called for.
Yeah, and it's gotta have enough at that point, um, we've been looking at these, these one pagers a lot. The budget spreadsheet and it, if that were followed by like a sort of one page bullet point narrative. Uh, from the superintendent, uh, that, like in terms of what you'd attached to a meeting, that's probably enough. And then in the meeting, maybe. Um, add on the highlights, uh, cuz it is, it is important to, you know, talk about. What kind of back, you know, the background of what the budget's like, et cetera, et cetera, in the school system, but. But I, as far as the budget specifically goes, I'd like that sort of narrative change and, uh. And, and, uh, at least the one pager with, with numbers.
Yeah. Did you say that last thought again? Cause I was kind of like.
No, it, it's fine. That's kind of rambling a little bit. I just, in terms of the information, I'd want the public to have it. The public heating, he- hearing is basically a somewhat detailed budget, at least that one pager that we, we get. Uh, with the numbers and we can talk about how they should be broken up, but. And the other part is a, a companion, one page, uh, budget narrative, really a change, uh, from. Uh, you know, budget drivers, things like that. So that's what I'd want to see, uh, for sure, but of course the hearing. Um, and any budget presentation should set up things like, hey, what does the school system do? You know, there are this many, uh, thousand students, we have this many schools, things like that. These are.
Right.
How, where our revenues, stuff that's definitely budget relevant and why we're. You know, having a school system in the first place, but, um, not like the specific numbers.
So, yeah, so do you want to try to memorize, memorize that in here somewhere as far as like desired presentation packages?
So, uh, so I think you've got that public hearing on B O E draft. Budget, is that the superintendent draft budget or is it?
No, this would be the, uh, superintendent's draft budget would be in January and then we were talking about having the second hearing.
Oh, that is the B O E.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now would this be also a joint? Three body meeting?
I think, nah, I mean, they can come and.
Yeah.
But.
Well, they can, they can appear as public in the public hearing.
Yeah, and I don't know what the, I guess they're not like ex officio members probably. No, I guess it can't be of the Board of Ed, but.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could talk about, but really this is our, our process at this point.
Right, cuz you know, that's all, yeah, uh. I, I think it's, I, I personally would prefer to kind of have it like just a. Board of Ed hosting that public hearing in February, because that still gives us a balance of weeks. To, if we do it like, you know, early to mid February, it still gives us a little bit of time to make some adjustments based on the feedback.
Yeah, and, yeah, or at least take in the, the feedback, um. Um, yes. So I was wondering through the budget process. Um, so the superintendent is presenting it and I gather that there are presentations, for instance, from, uh, at least some of the school principals. And things like that. Where do we have, I, where do we have like kind of. Where they're telling, it might, it's not even budget numbers necessarily, but. Where do we bring them in in the process? It, it, they have that and I just don't know where we've got it in the timeline. Is that sort of a January? Sort of.
Well. Yeah, I sort of envisioned like that would happen similar to the way the town council and the R T M do it where, um. You know, it'd be a subsidiary of, of the. The, um, budget review committee, the whole meeting where. At, sort of like how department heads would show up, you know, for the town, like, you know. Greg Hanover would show up and like, you know, present his part of the budget and then like. Things, questions would be asked, you know, things would be fleshed out and then somebody would make a motion. To move a number or, you know, to move the whole, the, the, the proposed number and then there could be adjustments to that or not. And then that would move on. So I mean. That's sort of what I was thinking could, could be a more efficient way to do it as far as like. The transition from the superintendent's budget to the Board of Ed budget.
Uh. Yeah. Were they generally around? Uh, because I mean, of course, uh, San Francisco Patrick's regularly meeting in meetings.
Yeah. Right, so I guess there would be. I mean, it is a little bit of a different beast because, um, you know, this, the way the site budgets work, there's. Interlocking pieces with. Central office, finance facilities and that kind of thing.
Yeah, the site budgets themselves, like the true site budgets that sort of, it's not really discretionary, but. In control of a principal, it's quite small, right? In terms of it, and always gets cut, actually.
Right, yeah, and then that's, and that's the thing is, is, you know. It's. That's what's different, I guess, and that's the challenge with the Board of Ed budget versus the, the town budget is that. The Board of Ed budget. Um. You know, there's, there's funding coming from central offices being allocated to each site.
Yeah.
So if we were treating each site as its own department. And then would the Board of Ed be leaning in on? You know, advising a increase or decrease. Based on the principal's request for that site?
Yeah, and I don't even think they can really, really make requests, like even just.
Right, cuz all their requests go through the, go through the superintendent.
And, and a lot of them, they might not even actually make that ever. For instance, how many teachers are in a, a building? Uh, but so maybe the way of saying it is, um, we would like the people that can provide, um. Uh, budget relevant context or, or relevant context for the budget process, right? Like, because o- oftentimes the questions are more like, well, what are the class sizes? So it's such, such a place. Um, oh, you're really getting slammed this year with, um, you know, uh, a high special ed load. Um, and actually Denise Doolittle would typically be at the meetings, I would think, uh, to do that.
Um, right.
So. Like, like basically we need someone with, you know, uh, boots on the ground. That during, when we're talking about that part. Um, wherever it be, one of, we're, because presumably we're not gonna talk about each elementary school separately, but we'll be talking about elementary education. And, uh, and we'll definitely talk about special education for sure as a separate thing.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Um, yeah.
And, and so kind of getting, it's almost, it's almost like the, uh, I think Susan calls it the highlights presentations where.
Right.
Kind of getting a, a, a con- a contextual highlights presentation from. You know, one of the elementary school te- uh, principals or someone else could be, but for sure for. For teachers, paraprofessionals, things like that.
Right.
Um, but, uh, we, I guess we have to, I, I, the superintendent will let us know if we're, you know. Um, running afoul of any hierarchy or, um.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that's important to keep in mind because, you know, I definitely don't want that to be the outcome at all.
Um. Yeah, and I heard the calls about, you know, criticisms of, uh, of potentially micromanaging.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I think we easily get around, this is, I've always maintained. Um, they could Chris, they could criticize the R T M education committee or town council or the full R T M for. The same things, but, um, whenever for the Board of Ed, as long as the mind is, is mindset is programmatic concerns. Um, overarching programmatic concerns, I think we're on firm ground.
Yeah, but you know, it, it, it is, it is. I mean, historically, it's always been like. It's never seemed clear as to like when the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed always votes on a package number that's presented by the superintendent. That's superintendent ju- adjusts and the business manager adjusts based on, you know. Feedback and some consensus and like general, you know, drift of where the board is leaning. Um. And I guess, I was wondering, I'm, I'm looking at this process and trying to see if there is a. A more direct way to do that in a sense that, or a more clear process, you know, again, back to the similar to the town council R T M thing where. You know, could we look at each department and. You know, be able to say, okay, we think more money should be shifted towards special ed here. Or more money should be shifted towards this side of the athletic department. Um, or towards these programs, um. You know, and, and have that be a vote of the board, therefore it's like, that is what's gonna happen.
Yeah, you know, and actually the way you're saying it, you can have a vote about that without even having numbers, right? Like basically these are, um, guidance, you're voting on guidance.
Yeah.
Uh, like not the guy's department, but guidance on a particular, like, uh, for the athletic department. We want to see. Uh, like something relevant might be, uh, uh, more funding for middle school athletics. You know, or, or extracurriculars at, in general or at some level. Um, I think, things like that, because I, I, what I he- heard as I was watching the end of the, the meetings last year. Is that, um. Uh, it was hard to know if, um, people's board member suggestions or inputs had or have not been. Um, taken into account.
Right, yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to, to, to address or that that's my concern. Um, you know, cuz when you watch the, the town council or R T M, it's very clear. What the final change is, if there's gonna be a change. Um, and where it's gonna impact.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and a weakness of the R T M part of things at least is that, uh. It's not an iterative procedure. It's just like, you, you're going forward through each of these chunks. We'll just call them budget chunks and you end up with a final number. Uh, and I get you could, I guess you could reconsider, but I, I think with the Board of Ed. Um, and town council has that too, but, uh, with the Board of Ed, we would probably wanna. Uh, leave open a second iteration. Okay, so we've built these chunks. Uh, but now do we still have to make overall adjustments? And is that across the board, uh, or, or not? So like, I'd like to leave room for a holistic view of. The compiled budget before we just vote on it. Yeah, you know. Cause what tends to happen, it's easier to suggest increases often and then the reality decreases might. You know, happen later and we'll stab that record of what's been added on, um. You know, so that, so that's why I want that starting point budget actually is so that, you know. We can really know if we're cutting something below, um, where, where it needs to be just to. Um, equal last year and this year's dollars.
Something, I'll just could put a note in here saying like attempt to model similar to the town council and R T M process, um.
Yeah.
Modified. Um.
To have a, a final overall look or a, a last, uh, like a overall, uh, it's almost a reconsideration, but, um. Of the overall budget, right? Cause some of those numbers aren't gonna be locked in when we vote on a chunk, right? Like they'll have a better estimate of fuel. Yeah, yeah, and maybe we leave that to the end anyway, but I don't know, but.
How does that look?
It looks okay. I, I like it as it is. Um, site budget's gonna have kind of a double meaning, but we'll take care of that.
What do you mean by the double meaning?
Well, it could be very narrow, like, this is what you have, uh, Fitch to spend on paper. Pencils and everything else versus these are all your teachers and everything, everything is associated with. The educational mission at Fitch, for instance, uh, one is that latter one is very large, um. And it's probably what we're really talking about, but. But, but we'll, we'll tune in on that stuff too, um. Cause that, the object codes looks, um, at things. That's more of a policy, nevermind, I'll, I'll not mention that now.
Sorry, say that again?
I was gonna mention something, but it's not, it's not germane to this directly.
Got it. All right. Um. So we feel like those two notes kind of capture the essence of what we're, like what the, the committee of the whole budget review session?
Yeah, I think so, um.
Would look like, more or less is just a thumbnail sketch. Would look like, more or less is just a thumbnail sketch.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we know what we want. We want an open, uh, CO, uh, COW that doesn't, um, adjourn, but recesses until. Time definite and then we pick it up and, uh, kind of work through it that way.
Yeah.
You, you kind of end up doing that anyway, just had a bunch of special meetings and things like that.
Yeah, and. Like I said, it just wasn't ever clear when we're gonna vote, like. We were voting on overall percentages and then we can never go. It felt like we couldn't really go into like an object code and say, no, we wanna decrease this, this one. Let's decrease this one and let's increase that one.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we said generally, oh, maybe, maybe, and then like then come, come back and maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, you know. Uh, and, and.
And, and I could see from like the superintendent's point of view or finance directors too, like, you know, pushback on that, right? Uh, and, and that's fine, I can see it both ways. Um, one, one thing that is clear is that, um, the board. Uh, has to approve any transfer between those broad functions. Those are the ones that are state. Controlled like the, those, you know, big ones like education, uh, uh, outside services. Um, and, and so we, we definitely are. That's, that's absolutely fair game for the BOE to, um, vote on separately and, and move things around. Um, the individual object codes, like, you know, what you're spending on for. Uh, you know, like full-time equivalent in one school versus another, how, how many athletic coaches. I could see that being open debate.
Uh, yeah, and, and but, you know. And I think there's a necessary tension there, like a, a dynamic tension that's.
Yeah.
Um, that's necessary in the sense that, you know, yes. In theory, according to the law, you know, the board of ed could reach in that far by vote, like as, as a. Collective body, if we voted to, we could. The question is, do we want to? No, we don't. Uh, typically not. I mean, has it been done? No, you know, and, and like that would be very off putting and I can't imagine any superintendent wanna deal with that. Nor any business manager.
Yeah, that, that said, I mean, that's where sort of like this guidance comes in, like when we have. Uh, these guidance suggestions, because we, we're gonna get the same ones from, uh, the public, like someone's gonna bring up. Uh, an issue that's. Uh, very like, very like tuned in to one thing that's, you know, something like. Band instruments haven't been replaced for two decades, uh, you know, something like that, uh, it's not true. But, um, you know, if they brought that up, that's an issue that the superintendent could take under advisement and, and put in. You know, so you do get that, that microeconomic view of things too that could come up, but I, I could see the superintendent. Saying, we'll handle this. And, rather than you having to figure out what number to add.
Right, but the board could say, could have a vote. Maybe a more appropriate way to approach it would be like, the board could, a board member could make a motion to increase. The funding to that department.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, uh, and not by a specific amount. But say like, we need to, you know, let, let's. Make that happen, and if it's the will of the board, if the motion carries, then. You know, then that's a direct order to the superintendent to make that increase in that area. But as far as like the amount of the increase is up to them.
Yeah, yeah, and there's that, and the other tension is between the wish list and, and the reality of. What you've gotta come in at.
Right.
At, at, at an overall number and, and pair other concerns and, and so, you know. It's, but, but the big thing is, by starting earlier. And having these, these continuous cows, uh, that, that gives us space for things like this to be, uh, sorted out, wrestled if need to be.
Right, and, and doubly so with the, uh. With your suggestion of having the, you know, that opportunity at the end built in for a, a large. Broad scale review and reconsideration of overall numbers and adjustments there. So like.
Yeah.
If at the end of the process we realize, oh, Jesus, we just increased by a lot more than we even conceived of. Uh, living up to, you know. I mean, hopefully that's not the case. I mean, I, I would think that we could keep a pretty good running total on things, um.
Yeah, I mean, just, you, you get down to the cold budget realities at, at some point, um.
Yeah, and then you realize, gotta go back through and maybe take two percent off here, take five percent off there, you know.
Yeah, it's like the, sort of those uncomfortable trade-offs. Um, or, or balanced considerations that. You know, you can defend, um, and, and maybe commiserate with, with others on too, like this is. You know, this, this was as much as we could do, or we were able to, uh, do more than we thought, that could happen too, right?
Exactly.
So, cause, because that does happen in the, um. Uh, the overall town process, there have been times when at the end, they're like, well, in reconsideration, we have this much. We, we, we have extra, right?
Right, we actually went under what we expected.
Yeah.
It's a spell, and maybe, you know, we should do that and we can do an extra investment there, yeah. Um.
But the other thing is, um, the nice thing about. That continuous cow or for that matter, the RTM's budget schedule. Is it's a lot of meetings, but it, they are scheduled, you know what topics are coming up. That lets people dial in and listen to, and it's just planned, so it's not as onerous to. Like, oh my goodness, we need another meeting.
Right, and that's the other thing, uh, actually, that's a good point, maybe we should put that in here too, um. Uh, this past budget cycle was very difficult, was compounded because. We didn't know exactly what we're getting into any given night.
Yeah.
It was not on the agenda, so the public didn't know, we didn't know.
And it's open and it could go around, yeah.
And, and so, and then, yeah, so it's, it, it felt a lot of times they were kind of careening one direction to another. You know, um, so some sort of like systematic scheduling, I think. Cause I looked at past board of ed budget agendas and they did have that, they had, had schedules listed out.
Yeah. It just allows for a structured consideration of the budget, that's.
Right.
That, that's what we're going for.
Exactly, exactly. So, um. All right. We are hitting about the, um, hour mark of actual active meeting. As opposed to that.
Okay.
Um, just, just wanted to note that.
Yeah, um, I think we're, we're, we've done a lot here, so.
Yeah.
I had a question about one of the other, um, agenda items.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll, I'll wait.
Oh, yeah, well, do you wanna just? When you set the timeline aside for now and call it good for tonight, if you wanna move on to something else.
Yeah, yeah, cause, cause then Jen will get to see it and keep us honest.
Sure. All right. Um. Which agenda didn't we?
It was, you don't need to call it up, like, uh, but it's the, um. Review and discussion of budget software upgrade possibilities. Um, I, I, I saw it, but do, do we have those options yet? There's, I think.
Um, oh, you know, I, I, I haven't had a chance to dig into my notes in the last budget cycle, but I did have about four or five names that, um. Dave Flig, uh, did identify as potentials that he would have recommended.
Yeah.
Um, so that's someplace we could start. Um, but yeah, I'd also like to, um, get Ray's input on that.
So, so that kind of thing, it felt like to me that would wait until we hire our finance director, I mean. You're getting raised input, it's important. Too.
Uh, yeah, and at this point, I don't know logistically if it's even possible, even if we did s- somehow review and select a software. Um. You know. By September one, which is incredibly unlikely. It would not be online for this budget, this coming budget cycle.
Yeah.
The window trans- transition would be, I would think, shortly after we pass. Shortly after the, the budget's settled. You know, like the, the twenty-six budget. Once that, we have to go through the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle.
Yeah, so I think. Yeah, that, it's likely that that new software would come online, not for this next budget. Consideration, but the one after, uh, except, except we, I like that you have the. Uh, the upgrade, the reviewer, like kind of a format to do it. Because if we do get a new finance director, that person could say. You know, this is what I use and let's do it this way, and this is the way I wanna do it, and we could be like, you know. Okay. Hmm, that opens up the review for these other possibilities too, right? So it's almost like, that, that's the only way I could see it fast tracked, is if we hire someone, they say, hey. Um, this is what I wanna use, and then we'd have to then. You know, delve into review and discussion of budget software update, upgrade possibility. So. I was also, is there? I was also wondering, uh. Like, we talked a lot about the, the budget binder. Um, I, I feel like almost some of that's can be the phased. Um. Like, we, we might get some of that in this year and some of it not, I don't know, cause it seems like it ties in with this. The budget of software.
Right, a- and at the end of the day, that this. Um. I'm not sure, I think the ad hoc, I think this committee could persist. Beyond, I mean, our charge is not necessarily complete, you know. By the time that we submit some recommendations for. You know, if, if we still have ongoing work as far as like budget software reviews, um. And, you know, once that budget software comes online, you know, getting that kind of tuned in to. I mean, this might be a thing that does kind of exist for, for a, a couple of years, I would think.
Yeah, and we, the wording, of course, with our charge is to create a report and make recommendations, the full board, so. It's actually the recommendations, like for instance, the timeline recommendations are by nature timely. And, um, we could make that recommendation, I would think, you know. August, September, maybe, um, and then.
Like, I guess, I mean, one of the recommendations is that say that we continue to exist and that we, we, uh, expand our charge. To be like. And I, you know. Noting the fact that, you know, the budget software thing is not gonna get dealt with realistically. You know, this budget cycle, and that is going to impact how the table of contents, the big binder rolls out.
Yeah, sort of report volume one, and then, you know, or part one, and. Uh, so there might be more than one report, right? Like, cause you can see, we, there are some of these things we can. Nail down and present on pretty soon.
Right.
Or then the others, just kind of, you know, waiting.
Yeah. All right. Um. Well, that kind of feels like a, a good stopping point for tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well then. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn. Do I, is there any second? Who would do that?
That, and I guess that makes you unanimous. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, none abstaining. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Goodnight.